All right. Good evening, everybody. We will call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of November 18th, 2024 to order. If the clerk would please help me with the roll call.
Albertini?
Here.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Gramkowski?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mulho?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present?
Okay, thank you. If you'll stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, we thank you for our country, our community, our families, and for our freedom. Lord, we thank you for our current military service members, and for all the men and women veterans who have served and sacrificed throughout our nation's history. We pray that you bless each one of them and their families for their heroic service. We thank you for our police and fire paramedic first responders in our community and all across this country who bravely serve our citizens and respond no matter what. We pray for their well-being and ask that you be with them, with them and their loved ones as they serve our communities. We ask that you help heal this country's political divide as President Trump and his new administration prepares to take office on behalf of this great country. Tonight, we pray for guidance and that you give each of us patience, compassion, understanding, wisdom, strength, and courage. As we conduct our city's business here this evening, we pray for these things in Christ's name. Amen. Do we have anybody on public comment?
Nope.
All right, we have nobody registered for public comment this evening. Item four, approval of the minutes. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council dated November 4, 2024, as presented. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Albertini, second by Alderman McGee. Thank you both. Any questions, any corrections on the minutes that you have in front of you? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed. Thank you. We have public hearing. Item five, we have none this evening. Under specials, item six, special messages and proclamations. Item A, Public Library. Mindy Long is here this evening. Good evening, Mindy.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Hello, everybody. I'm sorry I wasn't here last week. I know you all had a lot of questions. Something came up and Daniel Arivelo agreed to fill in last minute, so I would hopefully, if time allows, answer some of those questions. But before I do, I'd like to give you an update on what's happening in the library and then see where we're at, and if the mayor thinks there's time, then I can answer some more questions for you. First of all, before I start, I want to say to Alderman Brereton, thank you, thank you, thank you for your comments. Last night, I did watch a little bit on my phones last week. You are expressing the same feeling and frustration that all of us city library directors have. The setup for city libraries is a little bit awkward. I guess it was made so that there's some checks and balances, but we're all frustrated. Every city library director in this whole northern region would echo everything you just said, so I do want to let you know that we are planning, hopefully, hopefully, fingers crossed, we would like to go to referendum and become a district library. It's a long process. As Attorney Drell pointed out, it has to go to referendum and it takes a while. The library did try it in 1985 and it failed. We think they tried again in 2015. I found board minutes that said they tried, and Karen at the county office has tried to find the referendum but hasn't found it yet, so it's apparently twice they've tried and it's failed. So in those cases, we have to be very careful how we approach it, and we have been trying for the past two or three years. As a lot of you know, we had a very bad reputation from previous directors. We had a lot of turnover. We had people who didn't really care about the library. We had a director who would just as soon see it burn to the ground as saved. It's my childhood library, and I feel deeply for it. I wanted to succeed. It was always my safe place as a kid, and I can't imagine it not being there. So I'm trying my best to get it marketed, to get the word out to the public that we do have a library. There's a lot of people who know we don't have, think we don't have a library. So that's our first step, is to get people to realize it has value in the community. Then, of course, we have to work with advocacy groups and figure out the best approach, but the second step was to do a community survey, and the library board just finished that survey. So we will have the results hopefully next week and find out what the community really wants. If the community doesn't want to be a district and doesn't want expansion, we're not going to try to push it, so just to let you know, we hope to, we hope to do that. Next five years, maybe. It's not going to happen overnight, so of course, we would welcome your help when we're ready to do that, so we will let you know. So just want to let you know it's going to happen. Hopefully, we're going to try. All right, updates on the library. The building is giving me a lot of trouble. It's the 85 edition that's the biggest problem. The 85 edition was built with some substandard materials. The roof, we had a little bit of a damage to the roof. Some tiles were cracked and got out of place in a storm. We had to have insurance company come out. They refused to pay because they said it was wear and tear from the materials, and some standard materials were used. We had to pay for a rough, full roof inspection, and we discovered that on the addition side of things, they use substandard plywood. So that plywood is cracking. Where the tiles fell off, the water leaked in, and we had water leaking into the nonfiction side of the library. Of course, I was worried about mold. We had to call Endurea Clean. They had to set up professional dehumidifiers, but we finally got that fixed. That was just repaired yesterday, and so we should be okay, but it's something that future directors are going to have to keep an eye on. That side of the library is not, is not the best build in the world, so it's my, the bane of my existence. The other issue we have is, as you know, last summer, we had terrible humidity damage. That horrible summer with all the humidity came in. There's ventilation along the eaves on the addition side of things, but it's not enough to counter that level of humidity, and we lost ceiling tiles. The drop-in ceiling tiles warped and fell. We lost about 30 of them. So another, that insurance paid for that, but it's a miracle they did. So I'm having ceiling fans installed. Hopefully, this week he's coming to get them in. I've bought the ceiling fans already. There's four ceiling fans going in to ventilate that section of the library. There are no windows over there, so we can't open anything and get any more air in there. So that's happening with the building. Let me see what else is happening. Four of our five furnaces went out over Veterans Day weekend. We have five furnaces running that building. They were all installed in 1985 except one. One was replaced nine years ago. So four of them went out. Three of them needed, two of them needed new process switches. One needed a new pressure, pressure switch and a new control board. The last one needs a new heat exchanger. So it's nine years old. That's the one that was replaced nine years ago. Hopefully, it's under warranty. Miller is looking into that. Hopefully, we can get that replaced at no extra charge. If not, we may have to pay for a whole new furnace. So that's kind of a, again, another 1985 thing that was done that probably wasn't the best lasting product. We also are going to have the same problem with the air conditioners in the summer because the same year they put in those furnaces, they put in five air conditioning units. The one has been giving us trouble for the past two summers. We're cobbled together with parts and warranties, and it seems to be, it was working pretty good last year. I don't know what it's going to do this summer, so just to let you know, those are the kind of things that happen in that library every day. The 1912 side of the building, beautiful, absolutely gorgeous, wonderful construction, two-foot wall, thick walls, no problem at all, knock on something. So it's the 85 thing. The stairway on Madison Street is constantly giving me trouble. If you've all been on that stairway, it was built in 85. It's not the best. It's starting, starting to crumble. There were potholes that the previous directors did not fill in, so water got into there and rusted out the rebar. I did have them patched. Last summer, they patched the gap where it's separating from the stairs. It did not hold over the winter because we had some shifting. Like any old building, you're going to get shifting, so it shifted. And now they're putting in a new flex sort of cement that should flex with the shifting. We don't know how it's going to do this winter, so we'll see. But they may have to end up just coming down, so we do have a drawing from the architects. Jeff Ernest has given us drawings on what to do and how to, how to rearrange it to get rid of those stairs, but it will be pricey if it has to come down. I'm hoping that we can get, make it last another five years. So that's all the bad news first. Good news, we have some wonderful programs coming up. We have a lot of wonderful free programs that people are offering for us. Celia Zumba's coming in and doing some introductory Zumba classes, sessions for adults, for kids, for teens. She's also getting certified in baby Zumba, so if she gets certified quickly, and that will have her in for that. We have a writer's workshop. We're going to have, of course, Julie's Diamond Art again for kids and adults. And we're having the Valentine's Cookie with EK Cakery again in February. So the program guide will be out in December. Keep looking for all those wonderful programs. Oh, we're also going to be doing every Tuesday, a chair yoga session in the library meeting room every Tuesday morning, so that'll be kind of nice. As far as financial things go, we were very honored to get, I don't know if anyone's mentioned this to you, I think they did. We were very honored to receive an endowment from the Andrew and Judy Ray's estate. We were one of nine organizations to receive this endowment. We received a check for a hundred grand. The Ray's family has asked that they have some say in how the money is spent. They would like it spent on capital projects, since the library board is not ready yet to decide what to do with capital expenditures and how we're going to move forward. It's parked in a CD for now, three-month CD that's coming up next month, and we'll probably just roll it over into another three-month CD. We got a good rate at the time of 4.8 percent. Now it's down to like 3.95 percent, so. There supposedly is more money coming from that once the estate clears. But again, it's, we can't just use it for like paying wages or paying the electric bill. They want some say in what's happening to it, so they will want some reports and some kind of input, so. But we're very fortunate. We adore Andrew Ray's. He came to the library all the time. He was just a fabulous patron, so we're very happy that he remembered us. Let's see. We also were very lucky to get a funding of $60,000 from Dave Vella. That money is to be used towards a shelter for the bookmobile. Absolutely wonderful that he thought of us and remembered us. He's, he loves that bookmobile. He cut the ribbon for us on the grand opening about three years ago, and so he's donated or funded some of this portion of that shelter for us. We won't be getting it until probably spring, and at that time, we have to meet with the building department, determine where it can go, where it's going to be, what's going to happen. And of course, all of that has to wait until the library board makes their plans for the long-range expansion, so. That's everything as far as updates. What's happening in the library? Questions? You all had some questions. Do we have time for questions, Mayor?
Sure we do.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Mindy? Mayor Alderman?
Former mayor.
Former Mayor Peterson, Alderman Peterson.
Thank you. Mindy, I'd like to ask you, would it be possible for all the council members to get a copy of the complete audit that the library got? The section that we got as part of our city audit was, I think, kind of a, just a bare bones management summary and then an appendix, just an appendix. But would it be possible that we all get what you were equipped with?
We have the same audit that you have. We're included in the city audit. We pay, it's all included together. We have the same thing that you have for the city. All those, we're in there. You just have to find us in there, but I can try to separate it out. It's a, do you have it posted, Sarah, somewhere online or? Yeah, it's all in there online. I have it posted online on the website, too. We can bring a copy if you want from the second. It's the same audit. We don't do a separate audit. It's all done together. We pay our portion to the city of the audit.
Okay, I might be mistaken on that. I, I looked at, I looked at a version that I thought was, was different in terms of the summary on some of the, on some of the discrepancies, some of the points that were raised in previous audits.
They will have some.
Called material weaknesses. There was a different report that I, I could not find the same report on material weaknesses in the city audit that I, that I saw in the library.
I mean, I'll just bring that with, but they did have, as far as I remember, the couple of things that they talked about were, there were some adjusting entries that were made. That was not made on our part. That was, we had Morrissey as our accountant, so we fired him, terminated him, whatever you want to say, closed their contract out. And they made some, we're supposed to make adjusting entries for depreciation and things like that. They never made them, so. We had a lot of problems with them last year before we closed our contract out, so that was one of the problems. The other issue was that they wanted us to have separate accounting for a restricted grant that we have called the List Grant. The List family was very prominent here in Belvidere for many years, and they have an endowment where we receive the interest. We receive 4,800 a year from that. It's restricted, and about 800 of it goes towards flowers or plants for the birthdays, to celebrate the birthdays of each family member. So the other 4,000 is restricted to books and collection materials. We used to just lump that 4,000 in with all of the books, but they want us to separate it out as what we're paying, what portion we're paying for each, how much goes to adults, how much goes to children, how much to teens. So we, we had to change our, if you look at our, our budget, it's a little different because we had to add that in for this coming year, so. I think that's all I can remember, that were the really big points of the things that need to be changed.
If I might?
Alderman Peterson?
And then the other question I would have, would it be possible to get, to supply the council with, with any of your usage metrics in terms of the daily visits, the daily, you know, unique visits that you'd have, and also the same for the bookmobile?
So we track all of our usage. We have door counts. I mean, you can't really, we have circulation counts. We have door counts. I think you might have been the one who asked last week about ROI. Was that you or was that, you didn't? So ROI, as you know, is very difficult to judge in a, in a public service institution, as Mayor Morris pointed out last week. You have to first determine the value of the service you're offering. How can you determine the value of Marcia Freeman's granddaughter's smile on her face when she got a book from the bookmobile? You can't judge that. You can't judge the value of the fire department getting in there and pulling people out of the Apollo Theater. You can't, you can't put a value on that. What we do, our member of, we're a member of a consortium called Prairie Cat. They're a circulation system. Everything that happens and is checked out, it's all tracked through Prairie Cat. They have attempted in the last, oh, year and a half, two years, to try to come up with some sort of value for the things that we check out that go through their system. So all of our transactions, our materials, our books, our CDs, our DVDs, they put a value on those based upon how many transactions we have and the market value of each, each item, and then they come up with a total value. So we're using that. We can try to figure out what we pay for the bookmobile, what we pay for the library, and then we can figure out the ROI from that. So I did a little calculations because I heard that someone was asking about this, and for the bookmobile, the ROI for last year is 11.1 percent. So that's not a bad percentage from the bookmobile. We had 15, no, 5,500 visitors on the bookmobile last year. There's going to be more this year because we have all the elementary schools visiting, so there'll be more than that. So I don't know if you want the circulation numbers, how many people check books out, that sort of thing. I mean, when you look at the library ROI, if I take the library ROI and calculate that, it's 51.2 percent. So that's the library itself, not including the bookmobile. So those are pretty good numbers if that's what you want, if you're looking for that.
Well, and I think those metrics are helpful in determining your, your survey results, too, when you said you've done a community survey to see what. I mean, you know, you also have to probably get that strictly from among the people that are your, you know, your customer base.
Yeah, they are patrons, yeah. We, like I said, we had 5,500 on the bookmobile. I don't, I didn't really write down for tonight how many people visited the library, but we have door counters and we track how many people are, come in, and then we also, Prairie Cat tracks our circulation numbers. So they do it monthly. I can, if you want them at the end of the year from, we go from May 1st to April 30th. I can provide you with that if you want a number for that, or you can have the count or both. Just let me know what you need. I can bring it next meeting on the second. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, sure, no problem. And I just want to say, I know you all had a lot of questions and, you know, somebody said, well, we're not supposed to ask. Yes, you can ask as many questions as you want. The law doesn't say you can't ask questions. The law doesn't say that I can't answer your questions. We try to be as transparent as possible because we're, we're just a public library. We've got really nothing to hide, so as much as we can, we'll answer your questions. Somebody asked about wages. I don't know who it was, but Daniel said somebody was asking about wages. Wages, as you know, we're forecasting. We're trying to predict what we're going to spend based upon from now, now it's October, November, what we're going to spend next year starting in May, and you all know forecasting is difficult. I don't know anybody who can do a forecast without some sort of a preliminary budget in mind. So when we budgeted, the finance committee meets, I meet with the bookkeeper, we meet with the finance committee, we meet with the library board, and we try to come up with as close a number as possible to what we're spending, our actual numbers are and what we think it's going to be for next year. So we did have a major increase in our insurance costs. They tried to raise it 10 percent until I had a little bit of a fit about it. I've worked in the insurance industry for years, so the first thing I did was ask them for five-year loss runs because that indicates to them that we're going to move our business. So then they came back with just a 5 percent increase, which is something that we were anticipating, three to five, but was not anticipating a 10 percent increase, so. So they lowered that, so that saved us a little bit there, but you just don't know where things are going to go. As far as wages go, we budget three to 5 percent. It's totally based on performance. Not everyone's going to get three to 5 percent. If we're going to, if we're going to do the minimum of three, though, I'm not going lower than two, one or two, because, I'm not going to go lower than three because if I have someone who does not deserve a 3 percent increase when everyone else is getting 3 percent, then shame on me. I should have addressed that a long time ago. It should not be coming up at a one-year review, so. That's what we budget for. It probably won't be 5 percent. It might be lower. We have some fabulous, absolutely wonderful employees who deserve a 5 percent increase, who are working as hard as they can to make that library a success. Some people are just kind of floating by, so it'll just depend. It's performance review based. Mine is also performance review based. I have requested that the library not, the board not offer me any more than what they're offering staff. So if staff gets three, then I get three. If staff gets four, I get four. I do not want to be like the previous director who was trying to get like massive amounts of increases in his pay. We're a team. We all work together, so I will get whatever, whatever they get, so. If that helps you. I think we had one more question, but I don't remember what it was.
Is anybody else?
Oh, cash flow.
Alderman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Mindy, how many employees do you have, full-time and part-time?
We have 21 employees now. We just lost, we lost one more part-timer to another job that paid more money, and we lost a full-timer this year to, again, to one of the medical hospitals in Rockford. Those medical libraries, so far, the last four years have lured away about three of my full-time employees. Their libraries are massive and they can't, we can't compete with their insurance benefits, so we're down to 21 now. I plan to keep it at 21 if I can. We might need to be looking at more part-timers over the summer because we have a lot of programs in the summer, and it might be a little too much for all of us to handle, but we'll see. We'll try to keep it as close as we can to the 21 number, so. Nine of those employees are full-time with insurance benefits. The rest are part-time. No insurance benefits. You're welcome. Somebody asked about cash flow and liquidity. We have two checking accounts. One is the main checking account that we pay all of our bills out of. That's, I think it had a balance of around 395 when I looked last week. We pay all of our, that's where all the tax revenue goes into. We pay all the bills out of that account. That is collateralized through First Midbank, and we don't, so we don't have to worry about the FDIC insurance over 250, so we're good with that. The second account is a, what we call a cash reserve checking account. That money cannot be withdrawn unless the library board okay's it, and we have two signatures on that account. That's our cash, that's our reserves. It was at 85, it was at $85,000 last month, and when the audit was completed, they pointed out that we had a little extra in our net income because of some money that never got transferred from the Gene Newcomer Endowments and Memorials. So we had close to 20,000 from that, so we transferred that into the cash operating reserves, so it's now at about 105. We spend 76,000 a month on average, so that's just a little over one month operating reserves. We do have about, there's 411,000 in an investment account. That was all endowments and donations and memorials from long before I became director, before I even started working there, and that was, has all been investments. It's invested with Raymond White, Raymond James, I'm sorry, David White's our investment advisor at First Mid, and that money can't be withdrawn easily. That needs three signatures for anything to happen with that, so. And then, of course, we have the CD at, we have the CD now at Midland States. And then Midland States has the major Sullivan Endowment account. That is split between nine organizations. That's a massive balance, but we don't, we don't have any access to the principal. We just get the interest every year along with eight other organizations. So I hope that helps. It was confusing. When I first took over, we had about six bank accounts, and some of them, the one at PNC had been there so long, there's nothing you could do with it. You couldn't take money in or take money out. You could, all you could do is close it out, and it had like six grand in it. We're like, what's this doing here? Someone opened up a six-grand account. I don't know. There were like six bank accounts, and I was confused, so we've consolidated it down to just the two banks, so.
Any other questions for Ms. Long?
And I just would like to point out one more quick thing for all of you when you're looking at the budget. I hope you noticed that the personal property replacement tax is going down. That's our biggest decrease this year. We've been receiving about $39,000 every year from the state of Illinois for that personal property replacement tax. The prediction, this coming in 2025 is going to go down 23 to 28 percent, so that's a big ding, and Sarah can confirm that that's what's happening. It's going down for everyone. State of Illinois is cutting back what they're paying everyone in personal property replacement tax, PPRT. So we had to budget for 30 grand on that budget instead of 39. For us, that's a big, that's a big ding. It's almost $10,000, so you'll notice that when you look at the budget, so. Not easy for us to make that up.
It is, and the city will deal with that as well.
Yep, city has the same issue, yep.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Long? All right, I guess there is none. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, and I'll be here on the second. I'll have my bookkeeper with, in case you have any more financial questions that I can't answer for you. And if you have any questions, in the meantime, you can just call me up. Just come to the library or email me or stop by the library. You know, we could answer anything you, you want to, you want to ask. I just don't have it at my fingertips right now. All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening. All right, and item B, 6B, we have Pam Lopez Fettis with Girl Dimensions with us this evening. Welcome, Pam.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'll try to be brief. I know you have a big agenda today. Just some updates. Project Vault, our Microsoft, had been approved by the Village of Cherry Valley, so we look forward to working with them on incentives and infrastructure and future developments in that area, and which it'll also mean a lot for Belvidere as those, a lot of that infrastructure will be going through Cherry Valley to this area. We've also been working with Revive Therapy and Wellness. It's looking for a location either in Belvidere or Papa Grove area for holistic services and products. Eco Plastics is a plastic fabrication company that came to Belvidere, and they're enhancing their electrical system. Their investment this year has been over $5 million. We've also been working with a project focusing on building materials manufacturing. We've also been working with a project focusing on building materials manufacturing. They're looking for a hundred thousand square feet in the Midwest, and we've also been working with Midwest Refrigeration Services on their cold storage facilities. They've completed one, and now they're looking to complete the other by the end of February twenty-twenty-five. Once they're done for the second location, their investment will be about twenty-five million dollars in this first phase. Already, the auto parts, their construction has been underway. Their investment has been about one million dollars for the location in Gateway Center. Hall Mill Engineering is another company that came to Belvedere recently, and their investment is over seven million dollars. And we have recently, the city has received information on Starbucks and Chipotle that is going to be located on the corner of Appleton and State Street, formerly occupied by Dodge Lanes. We've also been working with, providing a lot of our expertise to, in various groups and various audiences, to share information on workforce development, our metrics and economic development and programs that we have. In fact, our program for, through the Illinois Manufacturing Association, they have renewed a stamp grant that we've had for the past two years. This is a pass-through grant that we've been accepting on the District One Hundred's behalf. They could use these, they use these resources in order to help with scholarships and resources so students can get their, some of their books and materials paid for for the welding program. And last but not least, I'm really happy to announce that Kim Haley will be joining her team as a new business development manager. She starts on November twenty-fifth. She comes from workforce development, economic development, and most recently, she's been with the Rock Valley College Technology Center. So once she does start, I will bring her by to introduce you to her.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Pam? All right, hearing none?
Thank you for your time.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Okay, item seven, moving on, approval of expenditures. Tonight, we have general and special fund expenditures in the amount of five million forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. That has been in your packet. If I could have a motion to approve that amount, please? Motion by Alderman Peterson, thank you. And a second. Second by Alderman Stevens, thank you very much. Any questions regarding any of the information that's been in your packet this evening? Alderwoman Frank, good evening?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So I was looking at this, and I was trying to find out the high amount, because it's five million. Ms. Trenassee, could you tell us a summary of why it's so high, other than the tort liability and the squad car purchase?
Sure, it seems like a lot of things just came at once. We opened a CD, well, CD came up and we renewed it, so that came through, that was over a million dollars. There was the general liability insurance, the police department received, well, they haven't received the money yet, but the money has gone out for the Motorola radios, but that's part of a grant that came out. The fire and police pensions, that came out. The closeout for the landfill, that came out of general funds. Out of capital funds, that was high as well. That was a lot of the ARPA money for the primary clarifiers and for police cars. Water sewer was also high. We had our first IEPA loan for a hundred thousand, and they also had their share of liability insurance, and they had other things come out that are part of grants.
Thank you, that was very thorough.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
I have a couple for Chief Woody, and then I have some for Director Anderson. So I just wanted to reiterate what Sarah had just said, Chief, on page thirteen. The Motorola Solutions Police Radios and Services for three hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eight cents. That is all grant money for the people at home, so they know that that all came from grant money, so kudos to you for that.
Yeah, no, that, that's in part to money that was granted to us by the state through the mayor, so, yeah, we were happy to get it, very fortunate. Otherwise, we'd have been probably looking at piecemealing it over the next numerous years, and as we found out, these, the shelf life of these radios rarely makes it beyond our ability to get equipped with all the radios before they're on the life.
Thank you for that. And then, um, on the very next page, um, fourteen, two strikers, pepper ball projectiles. I just, I'm just curious, what are those?
Yeah, the pepper ball delivery systems were budgeted for, they're the paintball-looking guns that deliver small pepper ball pellets, and they allow us to deliver OC or oleo resin capsicum from a distance of roughly, you know, fifty to a hundred feet. OC is what we carry on our belt for those subjects that actively resist us. It allows us to incapacitate them, gain control of them, limiting, you know, injury to both the suspect as well as the officer. This just gives us that ability to do it at a distance. I showed, at budget time, I showed a couple of videos how effective they are. These are just the pellets as well as a couple of ancillary pieces of equipment that go along with those. It was all stuff that was budgeted for.
Thank you. And then, um, I have some for Director Anderson. Page twenty-four, ACE Heating, the Seaco Building Furnace for eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That's for the, where we had the building fire, when our street sweeper caught fire, so that's replacement. Most of that work is now completed, and most of the bills for that work are included in the payables this time around, and we've gotten some of the insurance money on that, and the balance will be done, and then, once we're finalized, everything's filed out, then we'll get the final reimbursement from insurance.
Okay, so then, I'm assuming page twenty-seven, all the Midwest Aggris Systems for, you know, all those that totaled seventy-three thousand one hundred and ninety-eight for, I'm assuming those are all Seaco as well? That's, that goes along with that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, I just wanted to ask about Galeno Trucking Kamatsu to Roland?
Yeah, our Kamatsu broke down in the field, and it had to go back to Roland, so we had to hire a flatbed semi to get it over there to them.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Alderman Peterson?
Listen, I have one for Mr. Anderson, it's out of my curiosity, and it's on the Wycliffe for the energy for, there was a sixty-seven thousand between three, three listings. I wasn't familiar with that. Is that an annual? Is this, this is going to be, it's on page thirty-two in the combined report. List three electric billings in Wycliffe.
Those are for streetlights. Those are the descriptions they use for the different, for the street lighting segments. Why, they just pick an address in the city to assign those to, but those are for dog-dod dust streetlights, those are for metered streetlights. We have the different street lighting accounts, and that's what those are.
Okay, so it's not just within Wycliffe, then?
No.
Thanks.
All right, anybody have any other questions? All right, hearing none? All those in favor of the motion on the floor to pay general and special fund expenditures in the amount of five million forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents? Will, when your name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Graham-Cosky?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And also in front of you this evening is expenditures for water and sewer in the amount of nine hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents. If I could have a motion to that effect for discussion first, please, thank you. Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. And a second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. Any questions regarding the information that's in your packet regarding water and sewer All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Graham-Cosky?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Moving on to item eight, please note, for the record, items A through H have been placed on file with the city clerk's office, and for your review, if you choose, also flipping Item A, aye. Minutes out of committee of the whole building planning, zoning, and public works dated November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. If I could have a motion for their approval, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, thank you. Second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. Any questions, any comments, any concerns, any corrections regarding the motion that's on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And moving on, item nine, A, is ordinance for a second reading, that being ordinance number seven oh three H, and ordinance, bless you, amending sections twenty-two dash thirty-one, twenty-two dash thirty-two, twenty-two dash thirty-three, thirty-four, sixty-seven, five-hundred, five oh one, five oh two of the Belvedere Municipal Code in adopting and amending the twenty-twenty-one International Building Code, the twenty-twenty-one International Residential Code, the twenty-twenty-one International Fire Code, the twenty-twenty-one International Mechanical Code, and the twenty-twenty-one International Fuel Gas Code, portions of the twenty-twenty-four International Fire Code, the NFPA eight-five-five dash two-zero-two-three, and the twenty-twenty-one International Property Maintenance Code. So essentially, it's amendments that have been made to the building code. So if I could have a motion to that effect, please, at least for discussion. Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. Second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. Any questions, any concerns regarding the motion on the floor? I know we'd had this two weeks ago. Alderwoman Freeman?
So I, I know Director Countryman isn't here. I, my question could be for Chief Shadle or Attorney Drella or even the mayor. Does any of these make for any potential hardship in any prospective new builds development, commercial or residential?
I'm going to ask Chief first, because I know some of the discussion had been centered around in the past regarding, for instance, sprinkler on new construction, which is, some people have determined that would be hardship, I think, for a home that is around fifteen thousand, I guess. Maybe I'm wrong, but Chief, would you enlighten us on that and anything else that you may want to add?
So as far as the update to the codes, could there, could there be something that is costly? Every single fire code has something bad had happened, and they said, well, let's try and do a little better. I can just tell you that my approach was, is to treat each code or proposed amendment to the code that we added to twenty-one or the sections of twenty-four, that they fell into one of those four categories that I went over with you guys. But I do one hundred percent believe that the code is the code, no more, no less. Anytime you amend the code weaker, if something bad happens, that's what people would question, you know? This happened, but you made this code less restrictive. In the past, and even in some of the proposed amendments, the codes were requesting to be, to be more strict. And so in doing research, that was something that myself, Attorney Drella, we even met with system design engineers, contractors. We had a meeting I did with Inspector Beck to make sure that anything that we were proposing was not cost prohibitive. So one of the, an example of that is for lithium ion battery factories is having the sprinkler flows over those areas at point six gallons a minute per, versus point three. And so my question for the contractors was, number one, is this even feasible? Is this something that's going to be extremely cost prohibitive? And they said, no, in this situation, that it would, as long as they knew at the beginning, which they will, they'll get our codes and be that. But to say, I mean, codes are expensive, so there's, there's nothing that was in our control that we, we added to make it. Actually, we review it for the opposite. We, we don't want to create a situation where a business has to go out of business because now all of a sudden they're required to have sprinklers. And so almost everything in the codes is for new construction. It's based on commercial construction and things like that. So we really tried to, as much as possible, avoid a situation that you're describing.
Okay, so my concern is, like, renovations on older buildings, say, I mean, even take the library, and they need to have some work done, it's going to make it more difficult for them to pass inspections and more cost prohibitive to them, just as an example. And then, you know, my other concern is, are these, are these equal to other communities surrounding us so that potential developers don't say it's too cost prohibitive here because of their code, so we'll just go ahead and go to Love's Park or Maringo or somewhere else and have our business?
I can get into that one a little bit quicker, because Chief's focused on the fire codes and really new construction, where they're dealing with new design plans coming in. So, yes, if you're talking about existing construction or renovation, or God forbid there's a fire or something like that, and they have to rebuild, the general thumb is as long as it's less than fifty percent of the value of the new work, they go under the old codes. There's certain exceptions to that, for example, in the commercial sector, if there's a change in use, it might trigger, for example, putting a new alarm system or sprinkler system. But that's all in our existing codes. That's nothing new in the new codes we're considering. That has always existed. So no, you're not looking really affecting your existing construction very much at all. As far as new construction goes, especially on the residential side, there were not drastic increases in the two codes. If anything, it actually takes into account modern building techniques and materials to actually decrease cost of construction. I'm not saying it's going to be cheaper to build a house now, prices go up. If anything, it just takes into account those new building techniques and materials. So those are the primary changes on the building side of it. On the fire side, really, you're not looking at anything that's going to drastically affect cost of construction, with the exception of battery plants, because we're adopting the twenty-four codes, and frankly, that's needed, because the old codes didn't address that at all. So we'd have been stuck in limbo on how to handle that. As to the question about what other communities are doing, as I think I stated back committee level, the International Coal Council is pretty much what every community relies upon to adopt codes. Communities go at different paces as to how far they, how quickly they adopt new codes, but pretty much everybody in the region right now is looking at going to these codes, so.
The only thing I'd add to that is, Rockford and District Two have already gone to the twenty-one codes, and if anything's, our codes are less amended, so if anything, and nothing is added, that would make us less competitive.
And I do think it's important to note that the Chief and I and City Attorney had chatted about with electric vehicles with batteries, and we, nobody knows probably more about that than Chief Shadle, and I know that was a concern that he had brought up to me, and after I had educated myself and listened to him, that is a concern, because, you know, some of these fires, even on the roadside, you could dump thirty or forty thousand gallons on them, and they do not extinguish, whereas a regular vehicle... them and they do not extinguish, whereas a regular vehicle is between 500 to 800 gallons, I believe. So, one of the main concerns was, especially after, for me, was after they had had the fire up in Rosco, which was significant fire. We certainly understand that when we go forward with a new technology, we want to make sure that our codes, especially representing public safety with fire safety are, you know, we're not behind on those and that we are educated. And I feel that the Chief has done a wonderful job suggesting to the council as we go forward, how to make sure that, you know, if you have 1,000 batteries and you have a fire and they continue to burn one after another, we would have a real dilemma on our hands, not to mention, I guess, the, the public safety effects and the environmental effects of the contaminants that are used in, in batteries. And if those get, have a fire and they get through into the groundwater or they get into the air. So, I do appreciate Chief Shadle's diligence on that to make sure that we have adopted something. I don't think the last chapter's been written on that by any means, but at least the first chapter has, so. Alderwoman Freeman?
So, yeah, I think it's a, it's a good thing, especially since we may potentially have Stellantis building the battery plant out there if they follow through on their commitment to that. So, I think it's, it's good.
Okay. All right, Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. I have one quick question. Being illiterate on firefighting, is there another media that can be used for batteries other than water that would be more efficient?
They've made some chemicals that allow for decreased speed of growth of runaway, thermal runaway, but as of right now, there's nothing that will actually suppress thermal runaway. And the problem is, is that the heat created by thermal runaway is greater than the absorption, the ability of water to absorb that heat. So, water actually doesn't suppress those fires, it just puts out everything around it until whatever's burning is done burning. So, that's why the, there's, you'll see in Europe, they have, they literally, if there's a car fire, they'll have, bring a crane and drop it in water and seal it. If you have an electric car in a junkyard, you can't put anything by it because it can just start back up on fire. So, that's just the nature of batteries, but right now, there is not anything that will effectively suppress or stop battery runaway.
So, there's not like a Freon or a Halon that would take the oxygen away from it?
No, the, you, if you take the oxygen away, that's dumping it in, in water. They also make fire blankets for automobiles where you literally pull it over the car and then it will suffocate it. That works, but as soon as it gets the air, if it's still hot, it can light up. So, no, there's really, there's no good means to stop that thermal runaway at this time. A lot of the 24 codes deal with station, or design, building design where you can either move the fire out away from everything or move everything away from the fire. So, those are like the, the planning considerations for, for buildings like that.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. And what I was referring to, I guess, was the chem tool up in Rockton and I think we remember that, that made national news, so. Anyhow, thank you, Chief. I appreciate you answering those questions. Any other questions before we vote on the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. The motion on the floor then is to approve ordinance 703H this evening. Seeing no other questions. All those in favor of the motion, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And moving on, item 10, under new business, we have ordinance 704H in front of you. That's for a first reading. It'll be back in two weeks, that being an ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city of Belvedere, Boone County, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024 and ending April 30th, 2025. We have item B, 705H as well, first reading, be back in two weeks, that being an ordinance making a levy and providing for a special service area District 2 in the city of Belvedere, Boone County, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024 and ending April 30th, 2025. We have item C, ordinance 706H as well, for first reading, be back in two weeks, that being an ordinance making a levy and providing for a special service area number three, tax in the city of Belvedere, Boone County, Illinois for the fiscal year, again, beginning May 1st, 2024 and ending April 30th, 2025. We have item D, ordinance 707H, here is a first reading as well, an ordinance approving a replat titled subdivisions of Lot 5 and 6 of the final plant, plat of Deer Woods 2. And again, that will be back to the council in two weeks. We have item E, ordinance 708H is a first reading, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow a planned development within the single-family residential, three district located at 707, 5098, Tunberg. And that will be back in front of the council for action in two weeks. Moving on, motions forwarded from committee of the whole building planning and zoning, Public Works of November 12th, 2024, motions out of, motion out of Public Works. Chairman Peterson?
Mayor, we have a motion to approve change order number one in an amount not to exceed 40,000 for the Sixth Street Low Flow Channel Project. This work will be paid from line item number 01-5-751-8058.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions regarding the motion on the floor, now would be the time to ask. I will say, and I think I've already said this at the last meeting, but the Sixth Street Low Flow Channel has been Brent Anderson, Director Anderson, I want to thank you for that because it has been a huge help to many of the Sheffield Green residents that have flooded for years. And if we know where that channel's at, on West Sixth Street, by the apartments on West Sixteenth, Sixth Street, I believe it's across from 12th or 13th Avenue, that has been a channel that has diverted water out of the area that was built back in 1965 when Chrysler came, came on board and that we had housing that was put in, in, on the southwest portion of the city. So, it's ingenious, this 40,000 dollar change order, as in the memo a couple of weeks ago, was to establish concrete wing walls adjacent, adjacent to the seven concrete wires, weers to prevent erosion and continued to help whenever we have extreme flooding or that 100-year rainfall that happens about every four years. So, anyhow, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any other questions, now would be the time to ask. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
All right, motion passed and that is all we have on the agenda for this evening. If I could have a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. Second by Alderman Peterson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if anybody wants to stay, all right, for the record, we adjourned at 6:58 PM. Thank you for your time, everybody, and have a good evening.